I'd like to open the meeting, the school committee meeting of September tenth, two thousand and nineteen. If we all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening. Tonight, we're gonna, we first have the approval of the warrant. And I believe Mr. Murphy, since there's three of us tonight, Mr. Murphy, I think you have something to read for us.
I do.
Thank you.
Under the rule of necessity, since the immediate family members of two school committee members are teachers, the committee cannot reach a quorum due to conflicts under the conflict of interest law. We've been advised by council to invoke the rule of necessity to allow us to vote in any matter involving the financial interests of such family members, and by this statement are invoking the rule. Detailed disclosures regarding the matter were made at the committee's April eleventh, two thousand and six meeting, and recorded in the minutes, are also on file with the town clerk and may be viewed in the town clerk's office. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes, I guess I don't have to say that, who do I? The chair votes aye. That's three zero zero. Thank you. And then the approval of the minutes of August twentieth. Pardon?
But we don't.
Oh, yeah, so that didn't, okay. So that'll be another time. Thank you. And public participation. Is there someone here tonight who is not on the agenda? Please come up to the, can you come up?
If it's all right, I'll bring him in.
Okay, I'd like to see if we can get you a microphone. Is that an option?
Oh, I, I can come up.
Well, that, is that cord long enough?
I can.
Or do we have a loose microphone? I'm sorry, but thank you. We want people watching at home to be able to hear what you have to say.
Sure.
And if you could also, when you're settled, get, first, tell us your name, and that would be great. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
So, my name is Dad Place. And the reason I'm here this evening is we're having a function on October twelfth on the common. I represent a group which is called, called the National Taxia Foundation. And the reason that I'm here is because, because if we have inclement weather on October twelfth, I wanted to see if we could have a contingency backup plan where we were to use one of the school, school teams. So.
Okay. So what day of the week is October twelfth?
It's a Saturday.
Okay, and I'd like, Mr. Kuna, if you could respond, that'd be great.
Thank you. So, I met Mr. Place earlier today, and we discussed this.
Good.
So I do have his contact information. I have looked at the schedules. What I did tell him is that I would follow up with him tomorrow, just to make sure that there's no other pending request for the locations. So what we usually post are things that have already been approved. But, like I said, I'll follow up with him tomorrow to let them know if there's something available. Again, obviously at the school committee's approval. If we, you know, obviously have the space available, you know, I'll communicate back to the board.
Do we need to approve this? Or, I mean, this would normally go through the procedures in the, in the business office to use our facilities? How does that work?
Yep, so the request would, would come in for us. Payment wise, obviously, there would be, you know, a request came in that way. I think there's another request on the table that may be of interest to this board, but.
So, do we need to have a discussion about payment plans? Or do, is that something that just goes through the business office?
Again, there's two parts to it. There would be the custodial part and then the use of the facility. So this board has waived building rental costs.
I see.
Certainly not the custodial cost. Are there custodians on at that time anyway?
No.
Not on a Saturday? So, and this isn't part of that community custodial piece? So that would be the, a hard cost that we would look at. But obviously, for this, for this function, this is a fundraiser. Again, it may be that the committee wants to have us look into waiving the building rental piece, and then that would at least help alleviate some of the costs. And I'm sure that Mr. Kuna talked to you, there's sort of the custodial piece and the rental piece.
Sure, I, I understand.
And then if we could, again, that would be something that we've certainly done in the past. So, again, we'll have to see if the building's available, how many people, how much space. You know, whether it's the, if it's gymnasium, I'm assuming the two would be the, the middle school or the high school would be the, would be the two gymnasiums that we would look at. Middle school might even be closer, but we'd have to see what other varsity sports we have going on and what the availability is. But we've made, Representative Gordon dedicated a, the bridge over Cambridge Street to a fallen soldier last May, I believe. Is that correct? I'm just wanting to make sure I get the dates correct. And I'm sorry, I don't remember the, the name of the, the hero. But we made available the, the high school gymnasium in case there was bad weather as, as well. So we've done this before. So that would be, that would be it.
Okay. Any comments, Mr. Murphy?
I have no problem with the request. I have no problem with waiving the building utilization fee. How much lead time would you need, Bob, weather wise? Do you know what, I mean?
Yeah, like, I discussed that previously, like I said, a little while ago with Mr. Place. I think that we would follow up that week and probably even the day or two before the event.
Okay.
If we knew that there was gonna be weather, then we would set it up. But, I mean, obviously, we're praying for a sunny day, so.
How many people?
Well, this is our first time we've done an event like this in Burlington. So numbers are a little hard to project, but we're hoping for maybe a hundred people.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no problem with the request and all waiving the fee.
Myself as well. So if you, Mr. Kuna, can follow up with Mr. Place, and I wish you the best of weather.
Okay.
And a big turnout for your event.
Thank, thank you very much.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for an item not on the agenda? Ms. Marcus.
Diana Marcus, President of the Burlington Educators Association. I am here tonight because we are coming up on the time when the committee has their financial, their meetings with the Financial Committee of the town to start looking at what the upcoming budget will be for the school system. As you know, the current process has resulted in insufficient funds for a number of our critical services. And additionally, the current process works from setting a tax levy guideline irrespective of the actual cost of running a district. And we are now coming up against some real issues with that. This is, we walked into the Marshall Simons Middle School this year, and students have access to the library with someone there as the librarian only on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, not on Mondays and Fridays. I never in a million years would have thought that Burlington would be a town where any of our schools would find themselves without a library that can be opened from the time students walk in on Monday until they walk out on Friday. We have a critical shortage of nurses that is causing an unsafe situation in our schools. You are well aware of this from last year, but are you aware that in order to cover for students who have significant medical needs, teachers, excuse me, nurses need to leave their stations, need to leave the schools in which they are stationed, to go to other schools to give medication, especially when it has to do with the after-school program? We had a school, a class come here to the high school that is associated with lab, which is an amazing program. But there was no notification to our nurses and no, it was no information given to those nurses in order to allow them, to the nurses in that school, to be able to address the extra caseload and the far more complex needs of those students. So we are at, now at a point where we do not have nearly enough nurses to cover the number of students for which they have responsibilities. You were here last, at the end of last school year, when parents asked to be able to bring class sizes down because third grade was going to be significantly greater in two schools than in, than in the second grade. Those students were moving up. Now, I'm not gonna make an argument as to what an appropriate class size is for second versus third grade, but the fact is, it, this committee in a situation of having to say, "We can't do this unless we decide we're not going to have a guidance counselor." We are on a very thin margin right now, and our students are not receiving everything that I think a district like Burlington expects out of its school district. We are not Chelsea, we are not Quincy or Brockton, we are not a poor community. The tax levy on personal property tax, residential property, is within the lowest sixteen percent of this state. Our children are our greatest asset. They are our future. And if we aren't stepping up to make sure that they are provided with the education that they deserve, we're gonna be in a really tough spot. I have no desire to grow older in an environment where the people who are coming along to be the decision makers are inadequately educated. We have the ability to turn the process around, to start with the needs of our students, to start with what does it cost to give them what we know we want them to have? What any parent would want their child to have, any grandparent. And you know, here's the thing, my children are done with the pre-K through twelve world. But the reality is, I contribute financially and otherwise, through my taxes, through my work, to the community in which I live, because I want my neighbors' children to have the same opportunities that I would want for my own children. I'm asking for the school committee and for the administration to work with the unions that work in our schools to find a new way to talk about how we budget for our, our students and their education. We need to start not with what we feel we want to pay or can pay. We need to start with what those students need. And I hope that I will have your support and your help. In fact, that our students, our educators, will all be able to work together to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that the guideline discussions have been raised here numerous times by school committee members, Ways and Means committee members. Now we've heard from the teachers' union, and I think it is a big issue of how the guidelines are set, and that will be coming up soon this fall. So, thank you for your input. Okay. Anyone else here for public participation? Okay. So next, moving on, do we have any subcommittee reports? Oh, I've got, okay, I'm working off a different version of this. So I was wondering when we were gonna introduce our new student representative. So, welcome Bridget Conceason, our new student representative for the year. Do you wanna tell people a little bit about yourself? Great, oh, and yeah, please, and make sure the green light is on, okay?
Hello, I'm Bridget Conceason, I'm a senior, and I'm the scab for the executive board this year. And we met last week, and we said that student council's main goal this year is to create a more positive school environment and create a better community in the high school. And we haven't had a full body meeting yet, but that's what we talked about. And we have two new advisors.
Oh, okay. Who are the new advisors this year?
Mr. Milton and Ms. Fischel.
Okay. Good, and have you been on the student council bef, for other years?
Yeah, my freshman year and junior year.
Okay, that's great. Do you, any other thoughts you have for us?
Um, not yet.
That was your first week at school?
Yeah, it was good.
Good.
Yeah, it was fun.
Good. Any other comments?
Yeah, Bridget, I think we're trying to get on your calendar. I think you're very busy. So when you have a break, I think we're gonna set up a meeting with Ms. Simon and myself, so we can sort of map out the year, so. Decide the class you wanna get pulled out of, and we'll, we'll make, we'll make that happen.
Perfect.
All right?
Thank you.
Good. All right. So now we're gonna move on to the subcommittee reports. And does anyone have any subcommittee points?
Just, I don't think it's on the agenda. On the field.
Okay.
Kind of an ongoing discussion with the, the field maintenance. We had a recommission meeting last night, and the recommissions are obviously interested in how our discussions are going and consideration, I told them we're still kinda working our way through it. But, and I also told them that it's not likely to be resolved for any sorts of action this year anyway, so we're probably looking next spring in the event that they decided to do anything. So in any event, if there is any additional information that any of us might want from them or from, from their, Tom Irwin, who's their contractor, just let me know, and I will pass the request along. Other than that, I think they're just kinda waiting for us to decide how we're, if we're gonna take any action, and then they'll go from there.
Well, I think we've made a commitment to take an action and make a decision, but not probably in time for this fall. And Mrs. Rousseau is in process also, so I'll explain.
So, Mr. Egan and myself have been trading emails, and we're scheduled to talk tomorrow. And then from there, speak with Tom Irwin or Brian.
Yep.
I forget his last name.
Me too.
From there, so I didn't, I thought I should start with him first.
Yeah, no, that's fine, and you know.
He's been busy, so.
You know, they understand it's a process, and we're working our way through it, so.
Yes. And I also am interested in learning more about the chemical side of it, what that all means. Because they sent us all that information, but I'm not sure what it means. So I'm gonna join Mrs. Rousseau in some of those conversations. Okay?
Good.
Anything else?
And do, we don't have a, a date yet?
No.
For that, okay.
And I think until you are able to get all of your questions answered, and I'm able to, that we probably won't. So we will look. I don't think Mr. Murphy or Mrs. Monaco or Mr. Nelson had other questions in terms of waiting to decide, to have another final discussion, but do you have other things you wanna wait on?
No, I'm, I'm listening and, you know, whatever, see whatever information comes out. I think Chris did, and I haven't passed this along yet, but I will. She was looking for some details from REC, if we wanted to stay with an all-organic treatment, but something more enhanced than what they've been doing the last seven or eight years, which obviously hasn't worked.
Okay.
To see if, if we can continue like that. So, so that's something I'll pass along to Brendan.
Okay.
Or Chris, if you're, if you're talking to him, you can mention to him as well. But that's something that Chris Monaco did mention to me.
Okay, good. All right. Any other subcommittee reports? Okay, how about our Ways and Means committee? Do you have any reports for us tonight?
No reports. We have a meeting tomorrow night to vote the budget reduction. That will go to Jennifer.
Okay, and we'll be discussing that later, so, thank you. So now, it is my pleasure to welcome up Ms. Purchase and Ms. Chenfein to introduce our new Assistant Principal at Marshall Simons Middle School.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, Carrie.
We are thrilled to be here to introduce Jennifer Chenfein as our new Assistant Principal. I wanna first thank the committee for their support in reintroducing this position at the middle school. It is definitely needed, and we do appreciate the support. Since July first, Mrs. Chenfein has been an amazing part of our team. And I have to say, I'll let her talk more than I will, but I think that what really sticks out to me is her commitment to building relationships, building relationships with our teachers, with our students, and with our families. So that's really been, as we've discussed, her entry, really been her focus these first few days, and will continue to be, so. Very pleased to introduce her.
Yes, I'm so blessed and fortunate to be a part of Burlington Public Schools. I've met a number of you, and I'm really excited to continue working with you, whether in professional capacity or working with your children at our school at MSMS, as we practice pride and our core values.
Great.
So, well, Jen, welcome. Carrie, always a pleasure to see you.
Yes.
I think we're gonna be seeing you later in October. Is that our second, second meeting in October? We sort of talked about, we're gonna have a discussion about the new middle school schedule as it moves forward. School committee, you also see, we're gonna go over enrollments in more detail, but we're, we're at seven seventy-two at the middle school, so close to eight hundred kids. So clearly, adding the extra Assistant Principal was, was very necessary. You know? And I would, anyone who questions that, I think, would spend a day with ten, thirteen-year-olds, and I, I think that you change your mind. So, so I think that would be, as a former seventh-grade teacher, I can certainly say that it was needed. So again, wanna echo Ms. Purchase's gratitude, so thank you for supporting the position. Honestly, the only downside, Jen, about this position is working with Mr. Murphy, so.
And I think it's important for the record that you would've said that if he was here, or whether he's not here.
Yes.
Well, clearly, I would've said if he was here. I would've said something else, but two, so no.
He's definitely watching from home.
Yes. We appreciate your working with him, so that's, that helps us and makes sense. And again, just an exceptional faculty at the middle school, and I just think it's, you're, you're joining a, a school, again, with, with great teachers in place, and, and I think working on those relationships at that age is what's most important. So again, welcome and thank you. Speaking of those relationships, Madam Chair, unless someone else would like to welcome Jen and/or insult Mr. Murphy, you're welcome to do that.
I would like to just register the complaint. This is an ongoing example of his clear discrimination against the whole Murphy tribe. We'll deal with him later.
Just welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanna also just welcome you, and I know you'll do great with Ms. Purchase and the staff you have, and we're really looking forward to having you here. You know, I know, let us know if there are things that we can do to make the middle school a better place for you and for everyone, so, thank you.
Well, thank you for your support.
Again, Madam Chair, with your permission, just because we have the middle school folks here, and we have a discussion of stipends, and the committee may have questions.
That's right.
Ms. Purchase, if we could jump down to the MSMS extracurricular stipends.
That's number eight A.
Eight A.
Eight A.
So if that's okay with everybody. And again, I'll, I'll read the stipends, and then we can have a conversation. Again, Ms. Purchase has submitted a request for the approval of two new extracurricular stipend positions. Both the Student Council Advisor and the National History Day Advisor have been in existence for the past year with good student participation. Again, the advisors were paid hourly last year in their first year, as is typical. The contract has us moving now into the three-year process. So this would be five hundred dollars each year for each advisor for this year, seven fifty for next year, and then we would place the stipend in year three, depending on sort of hours and students and everything else that we would, we would look at. So it's recommended school committee approve an extracurricular stipend of five hundred dollars each for a Student Council Advisor and a National History Day Advisor, and I support both of these stipends strongly.
Okay.
I'm not sure, Carrie, if you wanna add anything, or, or the committee has any questions, but we certainly have the two folks here who could answer those questions.
So I would just add that we are committed to expanding our after-school offerings and our extracurriculars. And I think that that was, we appreciate the continued support in doing that. These were two suc, the new, new clubs yesterday, or yesterday, last year, sorry, it's a little late. And they were extremely successful. Our Student Council and our Student Council Advisors did a fantastic job of creating a student government, student voice, and also partnering with our parent-teacher organization and planned a great community event in our Pi Day. So, and because Mr. Murphy's not here, I'll remind you, that was the time that he wore the cow costume. So that was just a fantastic day. And then one of our last meetings last year, we had some of our award-winning students who participated in National History Day. And I think that's just a great opportunity for students to explore something of interest connected to a theme that's provided, but really show what they've learned in a unique way. And we had students who went to the Nationals last year, and that was certainly a credit to them and the hard work of the advisors of that group as well.
Well, last, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to make the motion for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
All right. And I just, I wanna say that I really appreciate the work that the staff have already put into these clubs, and the students have done a marvelous job. As you said, they came and spoke to us last spring. Is there any further discussion? Yes?
Can I just ask, is it one advisor for each club, so a total of two, or how many, how many give a stipend?
So I think it's a good question. Last year, we had two advisors to student council, and, and being the first year, they were compensated by, through the curriculum rate. So this year, it, I mean, I think we're looking for one stipend, but we're looking for two advisors. So I think that in order to kind of really respect their work, that as we're figuring out what the stipend, you know, would look like down the road, that, you know, it would be, I think, appreciated if they each had the five hundred dollars. But essentially, when it's into the contract, we would be looking for one stipend that they would then share.
So they'll split the five hundred?
I think that that's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer, because I think that technically.
Again, usually for something like student council, we'll look at the high school model. This is the first year we've had a middle school student council. If there's enough kids, I would recommend that we probably need two advisors, and it would cost us an additional five hundred dollars, at least for the first year. I think the whole point of the three-year ramp-up is for us to examine sort of student interest and see how everything works before we set the stipend amount. So, again, the total commitment here, I think we should expect to be fifteen hundred dollars and not a thousand dollars.
I just wanna make sure you're going to have two advisors.
I, I know it was a great question, and I should've made that clear. I just, we hadn't talked about the number of students, but with most student councils, we would require probably two teachers to, to look at that.
So the motion that we have on the floor includes three five-hundred-dollar stipends?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yep.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye, that's three zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Welcome.
All right, so now we have a student enrollment update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your flexibility. Again, at your seats, we just asked for a printout. Robin printed it out, I think, on Friday, Sharon, is that correct?
Yeah.
So we've seen the walk-in registrations. Again, they're not stopping, but they've, they've tapered off a little bit, and we've had some moving around of, at the elementary schools, because people have either moved their homes or they, they forgot to let us know they were keeping their kids in an out-of-zone school. And we really try to accommodate everybody. I'm not sure if, if, we haven't been able to accommodate everybody in the time that I've been here. And again, those applications for an out-of-zone placement really need to be made every year, because as our enrollment changes, the first priority goes to the students who live in that, in that school's district. And if everything, if anything got really out of balance, we, we may have to limit the out-of-zone requests. And of course, we're not providing transportation to the families who are attending schools out of zone, just for those of you who may not be familiar with that. So again, you have the overall district enrollment sheet, that if you don't have, we can certainly get that to you. So we're currently looking at three thirty-six, thirty-one. Again, we have, with ninety-two students being educated outside of the district, and a hundred and nineteen students in our early childhood program. So that's sort of the main part. And then I did a little bit more of a granular breakdown for you with the elementary schools by grade. So that's also at your seats. And, and again, I think the, the Francis Wyman Third, the Fox Hill Third, and the Pye and Glenn Second are sort of uh, the Francis Wyman third, the Fox Hill third, and the Pye and Glen second are sort of, uh, they're not surprises, but that's sort of the, um, those are the grades that are, um, right around, um, looking like they're over twenty, so twenty, twenty-one. So I think that's, um, that's where, um, we'd get the response. And obviously, um, my expectation, just doing a simple cohort analysis, is those classes are gonna, again, move up to, um, to fourth and fifth grade. So, um, in terms of, again, class sizes are a function of number of teachers, certainly, but also a number of classrooms that we have available. And so, um, yeah, we're, as we've discussed also on the agenda, we'll get to there, we're, we're sort of maxed out with the number of classrooms that we easily have, um, as well too. So, um, we're, if our enrollment increases as predicted, we're gonna bump into, um, a need for more teachers and a need for more classrooms, or class sizes are gonna continue to, um, to go up. So that's, uh, where we are at with enrollment.
So I'd like to also point out that we do have some breakdowns on ethnicity and race and, um, uh, the languages that are spoken. I believe there's fifty-six different languages spoken now in our district, in our town.
Right, so, um, the, the next agenda item was the Burlington, We Are Burlington demographics.
Oh, this is a separate document.
Yes, ma'am, so, um, nope, that's fine, so, um, it's right next on the agenda.
All right.
So, um, um, I did include this information to Ways and Means. Again, we put it together every summer for the opening, we do it by building. And, um, we can certainly share it in a, in its present form, um, we can share it. So, um, I'm not sure if, uh, the committee would like to do that. We can, we can post it on our website, we can email it, um, to, um, town meeting members. I could certainly, certainly share it with the town administrator. I mean, i- it's public information at this point, so we can get it out there. But, uh, you'll see, even though our enrollment is sort of relatively steady, I think we see, we're seeing, uh, again, slightly more kids, the makeup of the students within that population are, um, we're seeing lots of, uh, changes. We're seeing, um, uh, more languages. So I think twenty percent of our students now, up from eighteen percent last year, first language is not English. And that doesn't necessarily mean that they need language support, but we have to screen all of those students. I think about five percent of our students, Patrick, at this point, are getting, um, second language services. And so that's, uh, that's a population that keeps increasing, um, every year. We don't have, um, other information on here. I think Ms. Marcus mentioned, um, nurses. We are seeing more complicated, uh, children in terms of their, um, um, medical needs, their mental health needs and, um, other aspects of their well-being, um, their social-emotional health, uh, besides just their, uh, academic growth. So even if we, um, even if the number of teachers, academic teachers, classroom teachers, homeroom teachers, everyone to think about it, even if they've remained relatively steady, uh, we've really had to add, uh, positions in terms of, uh, student support and believe we'll continue to have to do that, um, moving forward. Just, um, we, we're just seeing, um, more complex needs as, as we move forward. So enrollment, sort of, um, bottom line enrollment is only one factor in terms of how we're looking at, um, staffing and supporting, uh, children, um, moving forward. But I hope this, uh, We Are Burlington gives you a glimpse of the, um, growing diversity. And as I say every year, and please, I don't say this pejoratively, um, is that, um, when I look out often, sort of at, at this committee, I'll even use ourselves first, when I look out at town, town meeting, um, doesn't necessarily look like or represent the student population that, that we have. So I just wanna remind ourselves, sometimes we're in a room and we think, boy, this is Burlington. And what I wanted to say is, um, um, really, in, in the numbers that you see in front of you, that, that's really the, the population, the community that we're educating is, is, um, what you're seeing in front of you. And again, I think that diversity is a strength, and I think it's, um, as I sort of say all the time, it allows our students to experience locally, um, the global world that they're gonna be living and working in. So it's a real strength in Burlington that we have, um, the level of diversity that we have. So, Madam Chair, again, I didn't wanna, uh, take away, but I'm saying it was on the agenda item. Is there any questions specifically a- about, uh, about this information? And again, another, um, population of students that we've seen, um, grow from year to year. Again, we've mentioned the economic disadvantage, but there was also something, uh, there's a definition of, um, military children, the member of children who are attached to a military family. We've seen that population, um, grow, um, from last year to this year and certainly, um, grow significantly over the past few years. And, um, I think that has to grow, uh, that has to do with some of the situations that we're in and, and, uh, things certainly beyond our control. But those families and especially those children carry an extra burden that we have to be mindful of, of doing that. And again, while on that topic, um, Bob helped me out. The, uh, the bridge was dedicated to Lance Corporal Gregory McDonald, so I don't, I didn't want to, um, not remember his name, and I apologize, I should've remembered that before. So, again, thank you to, um, Lance Corporal Gregory McDonald for his sacrifice.
So maybe, um, I would like to maybe discuss, I'd, I'd like to have this posted on the website. Did we have last year's already up and we could just put a new one up, or is it something new that we would put up?
Um, I think we've changed the website, so this would be, I'm sure it's not new, but we, we have last years. And where there were significant changes, I think I tried to, um, um, note that. And I think I gave you a two-year glimpse anyway, so you can see it. The changes year to year may not even be significant and, or as significant as if I did this, you know, I've been, been here over ten years now. If I looked at when, when we first started, um, they've really been significant over, over that period of time. But again, you are seeing, you're seeing trends year to year. I think you're seeing changes over decades, so I think is what I would say. But yes, we can do that, we can put it up. Oh, can't just tell them because they're not accessible, isn't that, okay. So we'll have to figure out something to do.
So if you could put that on the list of things to get up on the website and when you get it, when you get the staff to do that, that'd be great. Okay. Good, any other comments on the reports? I think Dr. Conti summarized it pretty well, so. All right, so let's move on now to communication, uh, with the school opening report.
Um, I wouldn't let Patrick do this since, since I just talked your ear off, so, um, we sent all the, we sent the same, all the kids home that came in on the first day, right?
I believe so.
So that's a good first day. That's, that's, uh,
Send them to the correct places?
I don't know about that.
Again, so just to jump back before the school opening, I mean, school opened for, you know, staff a little bit before it opened for students, so again, just, uh, kudos to our teachers who were, um, heavily involved in the planning of BPS Con because so many teachers volunteered to lead sessions or volunteered to, um, for topics that we, we brought people in to present on. So the feedback's, um, you know, positive. I think, um, we're still collecting the, the survey results, and I think we've mentioned it before and, um, I'll probably ask teachers to come in during the course of the year, um, going back. I know we, we don't necessarily have the formal DCP, but Diana and Sean and some of the folks that have been involved in the past to come back from a teacher's perspective and talk about, um, the best way to do professional development or the best format. Because, um, I, I just think from what I'm seeing with the mandatory sessions, um, a lot of teachers said there were a lot of great sessions I would've liked to have gone to, but I was tied up in mandatory sessions for a day or a day and a half. And that's a result of the fact that we only have a little bit of time all condensed before the school year for the most part. So again, um, I think it's a bigger conversation about how we, um, have continuity with our professional learning, um, for staff. So I'd rather have staff kind of give you their input, um, as to how it impacts them, and we can go from there, if that's okay.
Yeah, I, I actually have been, uh, very impressed in my time on the school committee with the BPS Con and the kind of workshops and training and professional development that happens, and I think it's really marvelous. I also really, I mean, half of it is offered by our own staff because our staff has such great expertise. But also, as a former teacher, I know that there are many ways that professional development benefits from having ongoing sessions. And it, right now, our calendar does not include an opportunity to do that. And I don't know for sure what the teachers are thinking about it, but I know when we start talking about calendar for the next school year, I would like us to have that conversation. I, I believe that before my time, there was a pretty strong, uh, feeling on the school committee that people wanted there to be these three days and not PD through the year, 'cause it is disruptive to families, certainly. But I also feel like in order to make the most of professional development, they, they, I think the evidence shows that it needs to have some ongoing follow-up. So I, I'd like to, you know, it, put that input into the discussion and, and into the, the calendar discussion, 'cause that's where the school committee ends up making, uh, you know, a, a, a decision about it other than what the school system is working on internally with the teachers, so.
Um, so again, the opening of school, I think, um, I don't think it was anything out of the ordinary. Um, I've been around to all the schools, Dr. Conti and I have been, um, to, uh, most of the schools in the first week and a half, and, um, reports are great, kids are smiling. I did hear, um, one student say, um, a parent say that he had the best day ever, and Dr. Conti said that's his goal is to have as many kids come home, you know, and say it was the best day ever during the course of the year. So I heard one of those. Um, I didn't ask enough questions about follow-up, there's probably more than one, I'm sure. But beyond that, again, I think it's been very typical. I don't know if, um, now is the time we're talking about transportation or if that's later on the agenda, I apologize. But I know, um, again, it's, that's a typical thing too, from where I sit. I don't sit where Bob sits with the phone calls, but, uh, I know we'll get to that a little bit down the road. But from my perspective, teachers are happy, kids are happy, um, and we're off to a good start in talking to the school administrators. There's no big issues that have cropped up the first week and a half, so we're thankful for that.
Great. And if, Mr. Kuna, if you could follow up on your perspective on the school opening, how, how are we doing?
Thank you, since it's not on the agenda, it is a great time to get right into it.
Well, I, I thought it was under school opening, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So again, um, we knew that the transition going in, um, was going to be a little bit difficult. Not because that the new company, Trombley, is not willing to do the work they are. Um, we also have a lot of bus drivers that did come over in this transition as well too. Uh, so of course, we'd like to thank them for their work. But again, every single year, the routes do change and we do have new students. So the, the problems, or I would say issues that we're seeing right now are typical of what we've seen in, in past years. Um, we do still have a couple of buses that were running late, that we've been able to trim those times down. Um, we do have some families and, that like to take pictures of their kids on the first days and so forth, and then we got to restart that again this year, uh, this week with kindergarten. But, um, again, you know, we're, we're doing well. We typically give ourselves about two weeks, uh, to work ourselves through the first, you know, two weeks' worth of kinks uh, in the transportation. Um, I think we're past that halfway point already, and, uh, I can definitely see the light at the end of the tunnel. But we still have a few more little kinks, we still have a few more little times that we need to pick up on. Um, you know, there were some concerns of crowding buses and so forth, but we've double-checked those numbers. Uh, Trombley's been very informative and communicative, um, to myself and my staff as well too, making sure that they're getting responses back to us with our questions. Again, you know, I do wanna thank the bus drivers, Ann Trombley, for the effort right now. I wanna thank the parents for obviously the understanding that it is the start of school and, you know, hopefully, if not tomorrow, you know, another couple of days, we'll have all this buttoned up and back to normal, we can focus more on education than just transportation, so.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on school opening, yes?
So with regard to the buses, um, I have to say I'm very happy to see the video monitors. I wasn't thinking our buses would have those, um, just because the students, the children, I've been around, oh, do you know they're videotaping us on the buses now? And even just having them have that thought has, has, I think, given them an expectation of, of better behavior. So while we didn't go into it, mandating that, seeing it, and, um, my child pointed out, see the round thing right there? We're behind a bus, you know, that's where, and, and they have on the bus, and so, you know, they've definitely talked about it. I do think that might be helpful moving forward with some of the behaviors we've had in the past. And then with regard to the buses, I haven't heard anything really about the elementary school. It's been more middle, high school. Is that what you've been hearing too, or is that new to you? Should I pass along those? Okay.
No, um, it's not new to me, and, um, again, I think it is public knowledge that not only are there cameras on the buses, but Trombley also has GPS on the buses. Um, so we get full communication. If a bus is running late, they can pinpoint where it is. Um, we know where the, where the mistakes are happening.
Oh, nice.
If we're two minutes behind. Uh, and because we run a three-tier system, um, if we're two minutes late on the first run, it's slightly tougher to make up two minutes on the second run, which means it may compound into the third run a little bit. So that's the stuff that needs to be ironed out in the first two weeks. It's not about eliminating spots, it's about minimizing adding spots, but also just looking at the efficiency of where we're picking children up. Making sure that the children are there on time when they're supposed to be, making sure that the buses' stops are minimal but efficient. Obviously, safety first, but then, once they move on to the next stop and they're dropping the, the children off at the school, making sure that they're on time at the first one, so that way they can continue that on to the second and third tiers.
Thank you.
And, and again, I, I just wanna just stress that, and Bob said it really well, is sometimes if you only have high school students and the high school buses arriving late, it's very frustrating. And it may have nothing to do with the high school, the high school run. It may be the, um, elementary run prior to got behind and then, um, you're just sort of last in line. So we're trying to go back to the point of the problem, sort of fix the point of the problem, and then we'll, we'll get better. But I think getting the high school buses here is, uh, is a priority, and I think they're the, they're the third tier of the, of the three. So I think that's where we're seeing some of the issues manifest themselves is, is in late high school buses. So I think if we can fix that problem, um, we'll know that we're fixing things, um, prior to that problem. So, uh, again, we're not satisfied, so I don't wanna give anyone that impression, but we're working at it and it's always taken us a couple of weeks to, uh, to shake out new stops and, and to figure out, try to accommodate as many requests as we can. And then, um, you know, as I said, the, the wanting, uh, a stop at every house and wanting the buses to run more quickly, it's sort of work against each other, so I think we have some of those decisions to make too, so. Bob's doing a great job, Patty knows in his office is doing a great job, and, um, I think we'll make it work.
Other comments on the start of school issues? All right. Then maybe, Mr. Kuna, if you, I think you'll be the reporter on the, uh, summer projects wrap-up is next.
So again, thank you for that. So at the last meeting, uh, we were down to the wire and we had a lot of projects. Let's say the bathrooms at Francis Wyman, the pods at Fox Hill, that just needed those final touches. Those are complete. So we do have bathrooms that are functioning, we have people moved into offices already over at the Fox Hill Pods. Actually saw students in there this week, so, um, I'm happy with that. Um, the other projects that I reported that were already complete, no news on those because they were done. If anyone's driven down by the gym, you'll see that the poles have been delivered for the project adventure, and I've had meetings and discussions with the water department, DPW, just because we have to alert them for dig safe. And we're still on schedule for next week installation. Uh, Matt Jackling is very happy about that installation, but definitely pushing to make it go a little bit quicker. So, uh, we expect that to be done, like I said, by next week. Um, another big warrant article slash project is the walkie-talkies and/or safety buttons. Um, the walkie-talkies have been delivered, they are programmed. Myself and Officer Fornier have met to discuss them. But again, with the start of school and buses right now, um, we knew that we were gonna wait till about the second week, possibly the third week to roll those out. Uh, and then we'll have to just schedule time with each individual school and principals, uh, to make sure those happen. Uh, as far as the additional safety buttons, those have all been, like, pre-wired already, and now they've just been going out and our team's been installing those. Um, so we do have probably about twenty or so, twenty-five that have been installed and probably about another fifteen to go. There were three bids that were kinda big ones that were outstanding, and that was the Francis Wyman fire alarm and the Marshall Simons boiler and the Francis Wyman air conditioner. So the Francis Wyman fire alarm and Marshall Simons boiler, um, we have received low bids and we have verified those bids and sent both of the vendors a notice to award. Um, what that means is, is that, once they sign the contracts and get them back to us, then we'll schedule kickoff meetings, uh, for the Francis Wyman air conditioner. Bids were received, um, but we're still in that verification process to make sure the bids will follow correctly. And I expect possibly next few days that we'll have a determination on that and same, you know, issue a notice to award on that as well too. Um, so all of those projects, the Francis Wyman fire alarm and air conditioner can be done after hours to not impact or have minimal low impact to anything going on inside of the buildings. Um, the Marshall Simons boiler could be done during the daytime. It's just in a part of the building underground that would not be impacting. But again, any loud noises or anything that would impact heat or air conditioning, we would make sure to do those after hours when there's no students in the building. So, I think that's kind of it for now.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
Lot of work.
A lot got done this summer.
Yeah, again, thank you.
I saw the new tables at the Marshall Simons, and they're really much more pleasant to sit at. to sit at, and I hope the kids are enjoying them, so. Yeah. Any other comments about summer projects or updates? Okay. So now we'll move on to the financial updates and we have-
Just Madam Chair, two more quick communication pieces. I apologize. Just Patrick wrote a note to all faculty. I know that, that some teachers had come to the committee last year led by Joe Adabato and Sean Hart about an extended learning opportunity. I think what had been sometimes called blizzard bags, that we got away from calling blizzard bags. And they had put in a lot of time, worked with teachers, done surveys, and we had even run a pilot day keeping the kids in school to see how that would go. They got feedback. Again, I think the process was really great. I think that teachers promoted this idea and did all the work themselves. Again, was, was a, was a real positive. The, the issue with the extended learning time is the State Board of Ed through the commissioner is not going to allow the practice anymore. So I think it was becoming more popular. I think any school districts that had it in place, he's allowing to keep in place for this year, but the programs have to end this year. So we're pressuring him to go back and to try to reexamine the hours and the days. Again, many states have an hourly requirement, like we have to, you know, at the secondary level have 990 hours. The challenge in Massachusetts is that 990 hours, you also have to attend 180 days. So it's the combination of both that really limit flexibility, and especially if you have a very snowy winter and you have lots of, lots of days out. So I think the work was positive. I think at some point it's going to be a tool that we can go back to and use. But at this point, the, the State Board and the commissioner is, is not allowing, they won't approve any lizard bags, extended learning, remote learning, however you want to say it. They're really sticking to the hourly and the daily requirement that are written into the regulations. So again, but I want the story to be that the teachers worked really hard on this and I think they did very high-quality work. And I'm sorry that we can't move that forward. And then finally-
I do want to thank all the teachers and staff who put all that time into it. It did seem like the program was really being fixed up so that it would meet the needs of our students in the learning, but the state said, no, we can't do it. So, so thank you to everyone who worked on it, and maybe sometime in the future, it'll be something we can use. Yes, Mr. Murphy?
I'd just like to express the frustration when this, stuff like this happens. It drives me crazy. I mean, we, we get new standards and you get things all geared up, ready to go. Takes a few years to get everything in place, and then they change them again. And you get a program like this where everybody thinks it's a great idea. It's difficult to get going. We finally get it up and going. Other towns have done it, seems to work. And now you can't do it anymore. It's just, it's like one step forward, two steps back all the time, so. Not much you can do about it. It's just frustrating.
It'll be painful for Wakefield and those towns have done it now a couple of years.
Okay. And is there more communications?
Just one last thing, Madam Chair. Just again, some, I want to express some gratitude to, we work with the First Congregational Church. They put together a summing reading, a summer reading program at Lord Barron. They, they held 29 sessions and they had 14 adult volunteers. And they read to students all summer. I think, Patrick, you provided some books as well through the curriculum office, and I think the Reverend Angela Wells and I think Lucy Damiani, sort of a name familiar to this committee, she was on this committee, spearheaded that effort. And I think Nancy Todd as well, a former teacher. So, so I think in Burlington. So again, I just wanted to recognize her efforts, and I think anytime we're sort of reading to kids or promoting reading, I think is a real, is a real positive, real positive thing. And I think it was just a great partnership. And again, wanted to express gratitude to the members of the First Congregational Church. So with that, Madam Chair, I am done.
I'd like to see what Ms. Russo, okay, yeah.
Done communicating.
Communications, yes, Mrs. Russo.
I, I just want to second how amazing that program was to have community members go in and read to children in our community and build that friendship amongst them all. And it's one thing when the mom and dad's always reading to the child or a teacher, it's almost like, oh, the children feel like they have to. But to have people that they don't know that just live in the community reading to them, it takes on a different meaning. And it makes reading important. It makes looking at your community important. And, and there are just so many facets to it. When I saw that, I just, it, it was excellent. I, I cannot thank enough everybody that was involved in that, so thank you.
So, and I also had an announcement, which I forgot about because I was using two agendas tonight. Sorry about that. But I did want to mention in advance that on September 29th, the Indian Americans for Burlington are going to be presenting the Diwali on the Common again. It's a wonderful cultural celebration that everyone is invited to. It starts around 1:00 and it goes until 7:00. There are games, there's dance and music and speakers. And at the end, there's a tree lighting because lights are a very important part of the Diwali celebration. So I just wanted to put that out, and I hope that people hear about it and attend. I've gone the last couple of years and it's been really a great experience. So just wanted to pass that on as well. Any other announcements or communications? No? Okay. So now, if we would move on to our financial updates, we have a number of different aspects. So Ms. Kasha will turn on her microphone. Thank you. And we'll start with our fiscal '19 budget year closeout. Okay?
Yes. So you have in front of you the typical monthly reports that you have been accustomed to seeing.
Okay.
And as you can see, we balanced out the year between salaries and expenses on operating and accommodated as well. So this is good news.
Yes. So we have, do we need some copies out there? You got it? Here's another copy. Nope, you got it? Do you folks have Ways and Means? Do you all have your own copy? Okay. So, Mrs. Russo, if you have, do you have questions or comments you wanted to make?
Just that I'm very pleased this summer, the way it closed out. And, you know, I hope this is just one more step moving forward that starts building the trust and, and the support that is the business department's really focused in working on this. And, you know, seeing this just adds a level of comfort that we've been, you know, a little uneasy with. So thank you for all that work.
Yeah. Mr. Murphy?
No, I was happy to see it. I think what happened last year hopefully is behind us and this is back to, back to the norm.
Yes. I want to thank you and your office for all the work. And Dr. Conti, I know you really worked at this to make it work and to make it clear. And it is, you know, I'm glad we're not, you know, in the position we were in a year ago. So thank you for all of that. Does the Ways and Means Committee have any comments on this aspect? It's good. All right. Thank you.
But again, I, and Madam Chair, I appreciate it, but certainly it's the business office that does all the work. So I want to take any, any credit for, for this. Again, Nicole's work has certainly, there's a lot of effort behind these numbers. I think people certainly here appreciate that. I just want to make sure that I had mistaken in terms of the fiscal '19 closeout, so I want to make sure I'm fulfilling your request for the fiscal '19 closeout. So, so you see that. So Nicole, thank you for putting that together. I appreciate it.
Any other comments on that, the fiscal '19 budget year closeout? The next item is the fiscal '20 budget reduction amount. And would that be you explaining it?
Sure. So I believe that the committee already voted the language of the article. We had just omitted the number. So the, the total for the reduction is the $216,381. And these are split between operating and accommodated, but because local education is voted as one line item by town meeting, we only needed one article. So if the committee would like to vote on that one number.
So again, the warrant article, I'm sorry, the warrant articles in place. What we said was to be determined would be the dollar amount. Nicole has provided the dollar amount. Again, thank you. So Sue, this is what you're going to be voting on tomorrow night, this number. And, and again, I'm hoping it's not that controversial that we're going to be lowering our operating budget, but I, but I think we can certainly answer any questions. So I just request the school committee make a motion to reduce our fiscal '20 operating budget by $216,381.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And now discussion, Mr. Murphy?
Not so much a discussion, but just a clarification for people who might be watching. The reason we're doing this is because we had to rebid the school bus contract. And when that happened, the winning bid was less than the bid that was on the table when we passed our operating budget back in May. So this is to reduce our operating budget in accordance with the reduction in the transportation budget.
Yes. And if I could add, because the town meeting voted based on the numbers from the original bid, the original contract, but because the second bidding process resulted in a lower bid, there was money that town meeting had approved that was not needed for the bus transportation contract. So therefore, that additional money is, is what we are requesting they reduce the operating budget. Last year, town meeting was very generous in the additional funding that we needed and where we were, we were able to have this money that we don't need for the bus contract that was approved. That's why we are looking to, if it's approved, which I think it will be, to request the town meeting then reduce the budget for these schools for that amount. Mr. Eiler, yes?
Thank you. Yeah, the analysis looks good and makes sense. I just wanted to double-check something actually. There is a potential that there might be additional costs that you would want to subtract out. I had heard, you know, such as maybe additional legal fees or something like that that may have gone into the rebid process and so on. I don't see that in here. Does, does that mean that was determined not to be significant, or?
Yeah, again, Nicole and I talked about it. I think we, we agreed that honestly, we have lots of legal issues that we have to do. We just considered this happened to be one of them this year. It would be really hard for us to tease out. They could give us the number of hours they worked on this, but honestly, it really didn't make sense. So we're going to bump into other legal things that we're not expecting, and that's just a part of our doing business. So that's why we, we didn't include legal fees in that and just felt like this was the best number that we could go with.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure you had something.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this before we take a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so it passes 3-0-0. Thank you. All right. So now we have the Powers and Sullivan revolving accounts report and action plan. People here in the room have had a chance to look through the report, and Ms. Kasha is going to present and then give us some suggestions on the act, what we're going to be doing going forward. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think all in all, I mean, I was pleased with, with the report. There was no fires, nothing clearing that, no holes that were missing in their review. If I, if I could just go through sort of some things that they asked that we take action on. The first one being the dormant accounts. So Powers and Sullivan identified four different accounts that have been dormant for a number of years now, and they asked that the committee vote to repurpose the remaining balance in those accounts. And it was suggested that we repurpose them to maybe a program that's similar in nature or similar in purpose for their original intent. So on this one-page sheet that I passed out tonight, you'll see the four, the four accounts there, the Math Wizard, Fox Hill Cooperative Games Group, Italian After School Program, and China Pathways, the balance in each of those accounts, the suggested account to repurpose the funds to, and any miscellaneous notes about, about those.
Couple last.
So again, Nicole, do these require, each account require a separate vote in terms of closing it out?
Yes.
So again, we can certainly have some discussion individually, but Madam Chair, do you want to do that from a motion perspective, or you want to talk about it all at once now?
Should we do it with a motion for each, each one, or should we have a general discussion? Any sense of that?
Again, well-
Maybe we could talk generally and then make the motions about each one. Is that what you were asking?
Well, sort of, but again, I'm not sure it makes sense to talk too much about $22.48. So I was going to say, I would recommend-
All right. So let's make a motion. Could I have a motion to close the dormant account of the Math Wizard at Fox Hill? And do we want to include in the motion what we're going to do with it at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. And to repurpose those funds to the Math Olympiad's funds. Is it, is it Math Olympiad's funds?
That's right.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
So, discussion?
No.
Seems like a good idea to me. Mr. Murphy?
Me too.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. All the, any other discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You know, the chair votes aye. That's 3-0-0. That passes. Thank you. And now, we, I'd like a motion to vote to close the dormant account of the Cooperative Games Group and repurpose it into the gift account in order to offset the cost of transportation for Special Olympics.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion or questions on that? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. That's 3-0-0.
I, I actually do have a quick question.
A question, okay.
Does it have to be used, or was that just a note of what it could be used for?
That was a suggestion based on what the original program was.
Okay. And you would be able to account for that in, in the ledger? Okay.
Okay. Any further questions on the Cooperative Games Group account being closed?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'd like to, a motion to close the dormant account of the Italian After School Program and repurpose it to the Marshall Simons Homework Clinic.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Just a note that I don't see any Irish after-school program again, but I'm sorry.
Well, I went on it, so it tells you something.
I actually remember fighting for the Italian After School Program about, well, when was, how, how many years ago? 15 years ago, with other parents to make that happen, but it's not happening anymore. So I think we should repurpose it as well. So. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That's 3-0-0. And I would like to discuss this before we put it into a motion, if we're going to include the repurposing, because my question, the next one is the China Pathways account, which is, been dormant for a number of years as well. And the question is where to repurpose it. And it's been suggested that it get repurposed to the International Students account, which generally I wouldn't have a problem with. But there have been questions raised about the use of that account. And so I just want to be sure that if we repurpose that money into that account, that we would be able to use it for the things that we've been using the international student accounts for.
I think, Madam Chair, the, in the report, I think the only question the auditor had about the use of the international student account was to pay off the cafeteria deficit. So, and I actually still think technically we can. I just don't think the auditor feels it's the best use of that money. So I think we can talk about cafeteria a little bit. But I do think moving that money into the international student account would give us the most flexibility, other than, again, we may not use those dollars to pay off the cafeteria deficit.
But you're comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think that's a pretty flexible account.
Okay.
And if I'm misspeaking, please correct me, so.
Okay. All right. So do we have a motion to close the dormant account of China Pathways and repurpose the remaining balance to the International Students Fund?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, further questions or discussion? Okay. Okay, any questions, further questions or discussion? Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that's three zero zero. Thank you. All right. Well, that was the easy part, wasn't it? So please continue, Ms. Kasha.
Um, so next on this, um, action plan, um, I made a list of the recommendations that have already been completed. Um, there were some suggestions for the before and after-school program, um, that we developed a cost allocation plan for overhead. Um, that we have developed a methodology and the auditor's given it an okay. Um, so that's been rectified. Um, the second one on the completed recommendations, um, was a few areas in building rentals. Um, and we've put together sort of, um, a few, uh, procedures to, um, to rectify their recommendations on those. Um, I think probably the most, uh, I think important was keeping up on, um, past due balances and sort of, you know, notifying and sending out notices, um, to any renters that hadn't issued payment for their, their rentals. Um, so we're on top of the, all that now.
So again, just for a bit of history, 'cause I can give history now, the before and after-school program, there was an offset in the operating budget. Uh, again, Ways and Means would be familiar with that. We used to only have one location at Francis Wyman. Um, now we have actually five locations. We're at every elementary school and a middle school. So we had to change the, um, offset. We increased the offset, and Nicole worked with the auditor to create, again, number of square footage. The square footage, the fuse, the utilities, and now we have, again, a larger number in the offset. But it's because we're also in, went from, um, one site to five sites and, uh, are increasing the, uh, the use. So I think that was, um, and the methodology, again, would, even if we expanded to the high school per se, I'm not saying we're doing that, but even if we were to add stuff, the methodology would then carry forward, and then we would, we would create that. And I think you'll see that in the budgeting process every year. You'll see an offset from the before and after-school program.
There was a recommendation on that issue, under school building rentals, also about, uh, credit card payments. Is that part of this? And I don't see where it is, or?
Um. Hmm, no, we, I, we didn't address.
That's not, you just did this point.
Yeah.
All right. But the ones listed are?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Uh, again, Madam Chair, we, we had talked, I think we had mentioned very briefly about using our school dude program, but we have to do more, um, um, we have to do more background on, on that in terms of if we're gonna allow that opportunity.
And then there's one more, um, one more account under that, um, under those recommendations for the Sprouts Childcare Program. Um, it was about, uh, recouping missed payments, um, from a prior year that was identified last year. Um, so we have already, to date, uh, recouped just about all of that money, uh, seventeen, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six of nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-one. Uh, so we're, we're in good shape in that account. Um, and that account's not in deficit or in danger of being in deficit with, um, our current rates in enrollment in that program.
All right, question?
And it, it might be the terminology, I mean, not understanding the terminology. So when you say recouped, does that mean it, people didn't pay? Or does it mean the funds were allocated someplace else and you needed to follow the trail to them?
It was, um, a, a couple of fiscal years ago, um, with the way that the pay periods fell, there was a skipped deduction, uh, because that's the way that most of the employ- employees pay for the program, um, is through payroll deductions. Um, so the way the pay periods fell was skipped, um, and hadn't been recouped until it was identified last year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, good. All right. So.
Uh, moving on to recommendations, um, in process, um, currently, um, we're working on, uh, two policies, um, that was recommended, um, in a couple of areas, um, one being a food policy and the other being a collections. Um, so I hope to have at least one of those for maybe a first read, um, at the next school committee meeting.
All right.
And then recommendations to be addressed, um, the master event logs and multi-year budget actuals. Um, this was another recommendation that was, um, brought up across, uh, three of, at least three of the accounts, uh, athletic revolving, IT tech, robotics, um, basically asking that we keep a more detailed record, um, about, you know, how much was charged for the program, how much students paid, how much, um, like the cost of the program was, uh, how many students enrolled, et cetera. Um, so, well, we agree that, you know, this would be a worthwhile endeavor to pursue. Um, right now, the current staffing, the business office, um, wouldn't, I guess, allow for that. So, um, would need some additional, additional manpower in order to, um, to get those in order.
Hmm. All right.
Um.
Yes, Ms. Russo?
Sorry, so throughout I see areas where it says, um, you know, the, the fund to be included FY nineteen or to do this for FY nineteen, which has passed, so that means to go back and, and reexamine it? Is that what they mean through that, or?
Yeah, so this, um, this, uh, this report was, um, based off of ending six thirty of last year.
Yep.
Not this current year. Um, so they were looking forward to say, these are like the accounts that in our, in our rotating cycle that we suggest should be looked at in that, for FY nineteen. So they'd start that in, in this year's cycle.
Now looking, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Eiler?
Thank you. Um, so I wanted to say thanks for having a great tracking list. I was actually, one of the questions I was going to have, so fabulous to have that. Uh, there's a, just, there's a couple of recommendations I didn't see on here.
Mm-hmm.
So I was curious what Stas does. There's a, a number of accounts where they were being, uh, they're being tracked, uh, seemingly by hand or on a Google Sheet or something, and the recommendation was move those into one of our standardized systems. It, has that already been done, or what, is that on your to-do list, or?
Um, yeah, so some of those are, I guess, on our to-do list. Um, some of those will come in with, uh, getting maybe an online payments up and running. So, um, a few different avenues depending on, on the account and the program. Um, I think a lot of what is contained in the report, um, is like suggestions for improvement, um, which I'm all for. I think that, um, just the action plan that I put together was the stuff that I felt we needed to address first and foremost.
So those.
But those are still definitely on, on our radar.
Okay, so, all right. And, and then, uh, just in terms of tracking, you know, with all the various accounts, there are recommendations as to when the next review should happen, and, you know, as Ms. Russo said, you know, some are, uh, you know, scheduled for now essentially, uh, and others are until twenty twenty-one or whatever. Uh, so how do we track when we, uh, just, well, I guess first off, uh, is it our plan to follow those recommendations? Uh, and then i- if so, how are we tracking when to kick off various reviews? And what causes that to happen? Like, have we kicked off the reviews that are supposed to be happening for FY nineteen accounts at this point, for example?
Okay. Uh, so for, um, I think the agreement with Powers and Sullivan was that, uh, we would get on sort of a rotating schedule. Um, and part of this initial report was that they were going to sort of do like, uh, like a risk assessment to see what that cycle would be. Um, so I think that that's where, I guess, the, the cycle that they intend to, um, continue to follow is laid out here. Um, we have not kicked off, uh, the, this, the FY nineteen reviews yet.
And is there a plan to do that, or?
Yes.
As I said, our intention is to follow their recommended review cycle then, or?
Yep.
Okay, great. And, uh, okay, great. Bye.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions over there? Anyone else? And Ms. Sackler, would you come on up and make sure the microphone's on, please? Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Sackler Town, member precinct four. Um, thank you, Nicole, for all your hard work. I'm glad you're here. Um, the, um, I, I just wanna flip to the, to the bus contract. I didn't see it on the website. Did it not make it there, or?
Just not yet.
Okay, okay. Um, and I know you're gonna get the Powers and Sullivan report up tonight, or so, in the next few days, right?
Um, yes, we said that. I just wanna make sure, again, what Patrick reminds me all the time is, um, we got cited for making sure our content is accessible. It's not as simple as just putting up a PDF of the bus contract. We have to put it in a format that they can do, um, um, text to speech, um, on the website. So it's a little bit more difficult, so, um, that's what's causing the delay. It's not as simple as, um, sort of throwing the content up there. Maybe we have to take an interim step and just get the content up there while we're working on, um, making the content accessible. But, uh, even something we mentioned today about, uh, the, the PDF, Patrick reminded me that, um, don't wanna sort of move backwards in the accessibility, but don't want to not fulfill the commitment that we made. So again, we'll get the bus contract up, and the intention was to have this report up under the school committee section as soon as we review it with the school.
Thank you, Dr. Conley. Um, also, a- as, as some of you may know, I sent a list of questions to Nicole, um, about twenty questions, and I won't go through those now. Um, some of the things that, that struck me, oh, just to get back to that. So hopefully, Nicole, can we meet, um, at some point over the next week or two? And we can sit down and talk with them instead, is talk about them instead of emailing back and forth. I think it'll be easier for both of us. Does that work?
Sure.
Okay, we'll set it up. Um, the building rentals, one thing that, um, I just jogged my memory when you, when you talked about that. I hope that we're not gonna be taking cash from now on. I mean, I think that's just asking for problems. And I guess I'm not clear on why a business would deal in cash, but, um, in any event, that's just my two cents. Um, so, so on most of these revolving accounts, it looks like payroll is being paid from, from them. Is that, that's right? I mean, is payroll being charged? So, um, d- does that mean that those same payroll amounts were included in the operating budget? In the operating accounts? So they're above and beyond what's in the operating accounts?
Do you wanna?
Uh, so, yeah, so any payroll or expense that's in any of these accounts are associated with the program? That, that account exists for and holds those funds.
Okay. Okay.
Would it be helpful if you gave an example, perhaps?
Uh, the before and after-school program, the payroll for the before and after-school program employees would come out of the before and after-school revolving account.
So.
And that's not part of the operating budget?
That's not part of the operating budget.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, and I also noted that there were some deficits in those accounts. Um, so it sounds like some of the, no?
No.
Okay.
Well, if I could also, uh, add there, I, when I read your question, I, what I interpreted is there sometimes are larger li- line item of res- expenses than there is of receipts.
That, that's my deficit, yeah.
And that looks like a deficit, but so, it, Ms. Kasha, if you, could you explain why you might have an account with more expenses than receipts that du- isn't going into deficit?
Uh, so these are all multi-year funds, so, um, they carry a balance from the prior year. Um, also, there's, uh, there's timing differences for some of these. For example, um, Camp, Camp, the Camp Bourndale account, we would collect, um, funds maybe, uh, in, before students left for the summer break. Um, and we'd end up spending those funds, um, obviously, the following, um, fall.
Right.
Um, but, and then sometimes they'd switch when they were collecting because of, um, just changes in attendance and everything. So, um, things like that fluctuate within those accounts.
Good, thank you. Um, Ms. Sackler, did you?
Hmm, um, no, I just, I mean, I did my own little cash roll forward from seven one to, to the following year. But, um, I, I take your point, that took a big timing differences. But, but I hope that we have some process in place that raises a flag that says, hey, you know, your expenses are exceeding your receipts. Um, and, you know, here we are mid, midway through the year, or even a quarter of the year, so, um, let's pay attention to it. That's all. I mean.
We do the, again, on the monthly reports, uh, all these accounts are included in there, so everyone would know about if there was a deficit.
Good enough. That's good to hear then. Um, the corporate gifts, so i- i- it, it looks like the money can be used for anything in the district. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, typically, yes. Sometimes it works, uh, sometimes, uh, there's a conversation with the corporation ahead of the gift if they have some ideas to what they want to support, but, uh, again, they're usually fairly flexible.
Okay, all right.
Can give you, again, a concrete example. I believe the, um, the flags that you see coming into the high school driveway that say pride and tradition on the light poles that come in, I think those were sponsored by the Third Ave, um, group.
Oh, good, okay.
So they, they were into supporting the schools and wanted to, um, promote, I think, school culture is what they wanted to do. And that was what the high school principal, um, decided to do with those funds.
Okay, thank you. Um, so Nicole, I'll get, we'll, we'll exchange some email and set up a, appointment, right? A date? Okay, good. Um, just one last thing, as I look at my notes. Are there, are the cameras, are there gonna be cameras on all buses, or just, uh, just a few?
Um, I believe, Bob, correct me, at the last meeting, um, the owner of the bus company committed to having, uh, cameras and GPS on all the buses.
Oh, really? Okay. So you folks talked about, um, putting some money aside or something, or for, to store the tapes? I don't know if it was just sort of some cloud storage fees or something. I don't know. Is that, is that happening now?
So, I mean, can I?
Okay, yes, Mr. Kuna, please.
So that conversation has come up, but that's not what we're doing. So Trumbly Motor Corporation owns the buses and owns the cameras. Those cameras are on for their property and their protection.
Okay.
Um, but as part of this deal, he is allowing us access to those cameras. When I say he, the owner of the company.
Yes.
Um, so we're not being charged additional for those cameras.
Okay.
Um, but the retention, the ownership, everything of those cameras are his.
Okay.
Um, but again, as part of this contract, we have access to them. Same with the GPS, same with the buses, same with the seat belts.
Yeah.
Right, so.
And i- if I could add also that, um, it's my understanding that the tapes are not, you know, at some point, they start to record over.
Yes.
But my understanding is that it's about a twenty-four hour period, so if you, it's not twenty-four hours from eight AM today till eight AM tomorrow. It's twenty-four hours of bus time, so it's, it's usually over a week, and I think it's close to two weeks. I don't remember the exact number. So if there were a problem, there would be a couple of days for someone to say, wait, we need to look and see, uh, what the problem is before it would be recorded over, is my understanding. Is that your understanding, Mr. Kuna?
At, at first, sorry.
When I heard the twenty-four hours, I was like, wait a minute, that's not long enough to find out, but it was twenty-four hours of, of tape running for us old-time technology people, whatever you call it, when it's going on a CD or something.
Well, but that's great, and it's also a good way to, um, to see the ridership information. I mean, if you look at a few of those tapes periodically and see there's only three kids on a bus, um, repeatedly, then that gives you a clue. Okay, so I think that's it.
Okay.
Nicole, thanks again for your effort.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Eiler?
Thank you for your patience. Um, just wanted to follow up on a couple, uh, quick things here. Uh, Camp Bourndale used to be in revolving fund summary, but I don't see it here anymore. So, but it hasn't been discontinued. I know the program we had talked about, but has the fund officially been decommissioned, or?
No, I think we just renamed it because we're not going to Camp Bourndale anymore, so we wanna actually stop calling it Camp Bourndale, if that would be okay. We're just, it's the fifth grade, um, experience, so I'm not sure what we renamed the account, but, uh, uh, it's something to do with fifth grade and, um, the fifth grade, not Bourndale, um, um, experience. We're no longer going overnight. The fifth graders will actually be going to Project Adventure. It's gonna be a really fun day. And, um, I'm looking forward to, um, to hearing about that experience.
That makes sense. It looks like.
We renamed it.
Project Adventure, is that what your name it looks like?
Yes.
Okay.
Very catchy. All right, not to be confused with the Project Adventure course, though.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, that, that's what I confused it with.
I mean, uh, yeah, actually, I, I, I was gonna ask a similar question, and I'm wondering if it can say fifth grade somewhere in the title, so we know that it's, 'cause we have Project Adventure in other parts of the district, so.
We, we can certainly clarify that.
Great, excellent.
But we, we will no longer be saying the other B place.
Very catchy. Okay, and the, uh, I, just in a somewhat related matter, it, the, uh, transition to our electronic PO system, did it seem that that's sort of installed at where it's been at quite a while ago? Has we, have we made any progress on that, or?
Um, no, but again, remember, we just hired a- No, but again, remember, we just hired a new financial analyst. I think we're sort of getting up to speed with the school year, and, and I think that process will continue. We're working on a district improvement plan, so I think it's next month. My goals will have to be set, and we'll look at a timeline for, we'll have a facilities and a, and a finance part of the district improvement plan that will, we wanna be proactive, Mr. Eiler, so I don't keep answering this question. But we'll give you a plan on, on a timeline and how we're gonna move forward. But I, I think we're staffed now to the point where we can, and I'll, I'll lay it out for you. I don't have an answer for you right now.
But the intention is still to get everything transitioned over.
The intention is moving that way, absolutely.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Yes.
Last year, before September town meeting, we had the engagement letter from the auditors talking about a number of things that they were gonna do. I, obviously, they've done the revolving fund, that was the big audit that was in that list of things. I'm just wondering, I know the mid-year review, I think he said he was gonna roll into the final, was that what he was saying in that email? I wasn't totally clear. So the mid-year review that was supposed to be looking at the twelve thirty-one eighteen financials is going to be added to the year-end audit? And is that what he was trying to say?
So, Ms. Harrigan, I had the exchange with, with Mr. Powers, 'cause I asked the, the question. He said, and I think he conveyed this in his email, that when he had his crew out doing the research for the, for the revolving, they looked at everything. If he had felt there was a significant issue on the operating at that time, he would have certainly brought it up to the committee, to you all. And he said it actually would have even been mentioned in the revolving report account as a, as a finding, 'cause the operations would have carried through. And I, I think his thinking was that, again, there wasn't, so he focused on doing the revolving accounts, the low, medium, high risk, and sort of committing that. And that he'll include that deeper dive on the annual report for the, for the town. But, but again, I, I think the message that he was conveying to me is, is the, the mid-year look was to just make sure we were moving in the right direction. And then I, I think he confirmed that we were, and I thought his email confirmed that as well. So again, I think he was pleased, and I think that you'll see a mention of that deeper dive in the, in the year-end fiscal nineteen audit that he's gonna conduct for the town.
Okay, which is probably happening now, I'm guessing, or soon?
Yes, and so he, he believes he's gonna wrap up the agreed-to procedures for that deeper look, for a mid-year look in, in the year-end audit. So he's gonna fulfill that agreed-to procedure.
It's not coming through as a separate report, in other words?
Correct, but he said, he said it would have, again, if he had found something significant, he said he would have, wouldn't have waited till year-end to inform the committee or inform us.
Okay, so has he done all these things that were in that letter from last year? That you know, from September eleventh of eighteen?
Ms. Kasha, please.
Yeah, everything's done, okay. I just wanted to make sure a lot of that's on. We don't have any reports, but thank you.
Well, I would like to follow up and ask if we feel we do need a written report, because it was an agreed-upon procedure. And we got some emails that said there wasn't a problem, but we asked for an agree, I don't know what, it seemed to me that, not knowing what an agreed-upon procedure is, that it was the kind of thing that you would get a report from. And I, I'm pleased, he didn't find anything, didn't feel the need. But do we, as a, as a body, feel we need to have a written report or perhaps a side letter to the end-of-year audit, fiscal audit for the town that says, as part of this end-of-year fiscal audit, we included the agreed-upon procedures that was agreed upon with the school district, and we found no findings or whatever the terminology would be? Because I, I want us to be really transparent and clear so that people know and can look and say, yes, that agreed-upon, 'cause people could go back and say, well, there was this agreed-upon procedure, we never heard anything.
Again, yes, but in speaking to Mr. Powers, again, I certainly will defer to the committee and to ways and means. You will be receiving a report on the agreed-to procedures. It's just gonna be rolled into the town's annual report, and he'll have a section in that annual report that will talk about a deeper look at school operations that occurred in the timeframe that his crew was out here looking at everything. So I think you will receive a written report. I don't think you'll receive a separate written report like the revolving accounts. Again, that's according to Mr. Powers, so.
Can, do, and Ms. Kasha, maybe you know the answer, but would that be listed as a separate category? That as requested in the agreed-upon procedures, this section of my report is about such and such and is answering these questions? Is that something we can expect from what Mr. Powers was saying, do you think?
So, I mean, I think that he was saying that in the management letter of the annual audit that he would mention sort of what, what they did, and that there was no significant issues.
Okay, I mean, I'm not an accountant, I'm not a bookkeeper, but I feel like this is an ongoing issue in town of the transparency and, and understanding what's happening. And people were willing to spend extra money at town meeting in order to have a good audit done, or, not audit, sorry, I used the wrong word, a review of the books. And so can you communicate, can one of you communicate to Mr. Powers that we would like there to be an identified section in the report? And, and Ways and Means, you folks helped me out on the wording of this. But it's some kind of identified section of that report that shows that this is the response to this agreed-upon procedures that we were in contract with him for?
Yes, so I, I.
Maybe you can?
But I, I just wanna make sure I'm clear. So, Mr. Powers, again, in our communication, he conveyed that they completed the agreed-to procedure. So I don't want anyone to think that that work wasn't done. What we're talking about now is how we communicate how that work was done, not that the work was not completed. So the agreed-to procedures were completed in the timeframe that was committed to in the, in the letter. Again, my, in my conversation with him, he was going to incorporate a write-up of that into the year-end audit. I can certainly ask him to make sure that he highlights specifically the deeper dive that was done on the school business operations. And you can take a look at that. But again, the, the, the commitment was fulfilled, and if you would like it communicated in some way different, I can certainly speak to him about communicating how that work was done in a, in a different way as, as well. So it's not, it's not about sort of, it's not about confirming that the work was done. Clearly, I think you can see that the work was, was, was done in just the work on the revolving accounts. But whether you want this as a separate section in the management letter or something, again, I, I can certainly, I wanna make sure I'm fulfilling your expectation, so if I can convey that expectation, I think that would be, he would welcome that. Again, I just don't wanna give anyone the impression that the agreed-to procedures work on his part was not fulfilled, because they did come out and they did do all of the deeper work that he committed to doing and that we asked him to do.
Right, so I'm confident that the work was done and it was, there were no problems found. But using your expertise, if you would, Ms. Creeden or Ms. Harrigan, if you could say what you feel we should get in terms of a written communication or otherwise?
I feel like we know that the work was done, but I do think that it's imperative that some sort of letter or communication be sent out to town meeting saying that, that there was no significant findings in the deeper dive. I, I think if we don't have something in writing, I, I think the management letter, end of year, I think that's great to put that in a section. But personally, I'd like to see something in writing from him, even just a one-page memo saying the work was done. We don't feel like anything deeper dive is warranted or whatever at this time.
So i- in addition to the annual audit that he would say, so again, a, a letter in addition.
An email that you could print out, any kind of form letter, anything. 'Cause you have a signed thing from September eleventh of last year. I think if we show up to town meeting without something, that's a mistake.
Okay.
And I, I would like to support that idea, and if at all possible, before town meeting, so we can share it with people before town meeting, okay?
I'll do my best.
Thank you, was that, was there something else, Mrs. Harrigan?
No, that was, I just wanted to make sure we had some evidence or whatever we needed, thank you.
Good, okay, any other, yes, Ms. Russo?
For one whose name is on that letter, I want a letter. I want a letter that's clear of what the finding is. I spent last year as chair saying over and over, we've made mistakes, we need to clean up the mistakes. The business department, the administration, Nicole, the Ways and Means, the subcommittee, countless town meeting members have spent numerous hours, summertime, working on this, cleaning it up. And I think it's important that we make as clear as possible what the findings are. And if there aren't any, as it sounds like there are, that we can celebrate them, we can show them, and, and we can show and start building back that trust. So, my name's on that letter. I respectfully request that he puts together something very clear and separate. Thank you.
Okay, we can do that. And again, he, it wasn't communicated that he not write a letter. Again, he just is going about this in the way that he would normally go about it, but I think he was very flexible in saying he will meet our expectations. So again, I also want, there was no intention in not doing it, he just was going about it in the way that he normally would, so.
All right, and maybe in conclusion, I, I just wanna, again, appreciate that, I mean, this reflects a huge amount of work by Ms. Kasha and the business department and other people in the district to, you know, we had practices that weren't being done the way they probably should have been. And now it looks like, you know, we've had a whole year of, of everything coming out balanced and with zero, you know, in all those sections. And I just wanna thank everyone for all the work that it involved, and I'm really pleased. It looks to me that, you know, we need to keep vigilant, but it looks to me like we are now, you know, coming out the other side and doing things the way they need to be done, and, and I, you know, wanna make sure that we're transparent about it, that people know that it is being done right and, and we can move forward with those procedures. So, thank you again, all right? So we have more financial updates. Ms. Kasha, would you update us, please, on the student activity accounts?
Yes, so, I think it was two years now, we had Roselli and Clark came out for an engagement on our student activity accounts. The law had recently changed where it's every three years we need an independent, an independent audit to be performed on these accounts. We're not up to that three years, but the agreement was that after one year of, after they've been cleaned up, we would run them as they should be run, have Roselli and Clark back out. So we have them scheduled to come back out this Thursday, and they're anticipating to wrap things up September twentieth. So, some point thereafter, we should have a report on the, the progress that's been made with student activities.
All right, great.
And again, depending on how that report comes out, I'm gonna assume the best, so just understanding, it's an assumption. If things are moving in the right direction, then we'll get back on the, sort of the three-year cycle at that point where Nicole would do an annual review, and then every three years, we would bring back an outside person, Roselli or someone else. So, again, this would be just an accelerated situation at first. And then, obviously, the monthly financials, the month ended, we're in September, so August ended, the financials went out. And this is the next school committee meeting, so you have the fiscal twenty financials that are there. I think, Mr. Eiler, we did add the revolving account sheet back in, so you have that, you saw that. And then the, the operating and the accommodated. And again, I'm always looking at those last two pages, and so we're, we're moving along. We're still making some adjustments, we're only two weeks into the school year, so. Again, I think that's where we are, so, Madam Chair?
Yes, so, would you be willing to just point out any highlights for us, Ms. Kasha?
Yeah, sure, of course.
Thank you. And can you tell us what page you're on, 'cause I'm still trying to figure out how to understand these?
It's one on mine.
Page one, okay.
So, as you can see, this report has actually been tweaked a little bit from what you're used to receiving. Before, we had done a year-to-date and then a separate projection. And our new analyst, Liz Montez, sort of came to me and suggested that this might be a more easy, easily understood report to the final users. So instead of doing the two separate, we, you can see we have the, the budget column, the spent and encumbered, and then the, the projected, and then the remaining budget. So it sort of just shows one picture on, on one report instead of having to sort of go back and forth between the two. So kudos to Liz for simplifying things for you guys.
Thank you.
And as Dr. Conti mentioned, this is as of eight thirty-one. The beginning of the year is crazy with staff changes and hiring and all of that. So if you see that there's, I don't know, like a large surplus in one of the accounts, I wouldn't hold it true and say we can go hire, I don't know, five teachers. It's probably just that we hadn't updated our, our financials yet with any movement that had happened in the days preceding that, so.
So to clarify, the report we used to get was, I think, seven pages long, and now we have three pages with that information, is that right? Or however many pages it used to be?
Six, I think, yeah, six, plus the revolving, so seven.
And, and the revolving, yes, so now we have four, okay, great. Mr. Murphy, Mrs. Russo, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, Mr. Eiler?
Thank you. Great idea to merge them together, they're definitely much clearer that way. The, just one, I believe, clarification that may be different from the previous reports, and it's fine either way. The projected column here is incremental to the spent and encumbered, whereas in the past, projected was the total projected spending including the already spent amount. So, so in particular, the total amount that's expected to be spent for the year, I believe, is the spent column plus the projected column. And when you subtract that total from the budget, you end up with the expected surplus or deficit for remaining budget. And that's fine, it's just a change from what it was before, so if people are comparing this to what they used to see previous year, it won't, it won't be the same, so just be aware of that. Great, definite improvement to your report, great idea.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the monthly financials? All right, so now if we, are we ready to move on to old business?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Again, Madam Chair, we have a, the standing agenda item of the elementary school building needs. Patrick did have to go, but we do have a elementary building needs section of the website that was completed, so I will send you the link. We just went over that, went over that today. So we're going to start to accumulate information on different elementary school configurations. We can talk about creating the space for parent input, teacher input, so we can have some of that information for the, for the committee. And then, you know, of course, any, any research or anything else that we find, we can start to put there. So again, baby steps, but it's gonna be on the agenda, we're gonna address it, and we do have the repository created. And then we can go over the content of that at our next meeting. So we'll, we'll show you the content and start to get feedback on some of the configurations. And again, we eliminated the Fifth Grade Academy as part of our conversation two meetings ago.
And given that there's three of us here tonight, I don't see a big purpose in having a further discussion right now on those topics. So I look forward to getting involved with that resource that you're putting out. But I would like to, and you mentioned this, the, you know, how we could get public input. And I'd just like to request of my colleagues that maybe at our next meeting, people think about ways that we want to get public input. I don't know, for, I mean, a survey, a forum, you know, community meetings, whatever people feel. I know there's different ways we can reach parents, there's different ways we can reach community members. So I would like that to be one of our topics, if, you know, maybe that's the only thing we'll get to in, in terms of the elementary building discussion. But I would like to have that discussion so that we can put those kinds of forums or, or resources in place to get that input as we move forward with the discussion, is that, would it sound good? All right, okay, good. All right, okay, good. All right, so, moving on, we have completed our new business to approve the extracurricular stipends for Marshall Simons, and now there's an item there, Dr. Conti, if you would let us know about the lab capital plan issue?
The Department of Ed is, has some rules in terms of how the collaborative can use their money, the collaborative has to account for their OPEP expenditures, again, like the town, and so we have to project for the Department of Ed, sort of our capital needs as well. So Patrick Barbieri, the executive director, asked that this item come before the board, again, the lab board, of which I am the representative for the Burlington Board, for this committee, Burlington School Committee, is requesting an increase in their capital fund for the lab collaborative, as approved by the lab board of directors and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The capital plan increase will fund future building projects, renovations, classroom updates, temporary classroom, modular space, and other unexpected building costs where lab utilizes space in the host district. Again, it's recommended the school committee should approve an increase in the lab capital plan by $500,000, for a total of $3.1 million. Again, I support this, just to give you an example, we have a lab program at Fox Hill, I think two summers ago, we did some work on the classroom areas where the Fox Hill, where the lab program was, lab paid for those upgrades from an account like this. So what really separates out lab programming from any other programs, as many other collaboratives that there, is that their programs are housed in schools, and I think that lab, as an organization, really tries to contribute to the upkeep of the classroom spaces that they're using. So again, I would recommend that this committee vote to increase the existing capital plan by $500,000, for a total of $3.1 million.
Mr. Murphy?
Increasing the capital plan by $500,000, how is that funded, or is that, does that come out of tuitions, do they, we're not writing them a check for that amount of money, we're just increasing the amount on the plan?
Correct, so the new rules for collaboratives is, I think, they can only carry over, they operate more like regional school districts or like towns than they do like single school districts, so they can carry money from year to year, they're limited on the amount of money that they can carry year to year, so the state asks the collaborative to identify how much of that money is going to go towards an OPEB account, and how much can go towards capital expenses. So this is, these are lab dollars that already exist, and what the collaborative is doing is identifying this carryover money to go towards capital expenditures.
All right.
For discussion, I'll make a motion that the school committee approve, increase in the lab capital plan by $500,000, for a total of $3.1 million.
Second. Okay, any further discussion or questions? Thank you for asking that question, Mr. Murphy, because that was also, so, we're not putting in another 500, we're just voting to allow the lab collaborative to use the money they have in these, in this way.
Yes.
And it often benefits us when it's helping us with our building needs, where we're housing some of the lab programs.
Yeah, we could potentially have access to that money, yes.
Okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, 3-0-0, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I know that ends the agenda, but I just wanted to, if you would allow just a brief update on the mosquito spraying?
Oh, yes.
If that's something that you want to hear about, so, Bob, I'll turn it over to you, I know they sprayed last night, is that, the town did, and-
In some neighborhoods.
In some neighborhoods, and then Bob's been working with Park and Rec, but he can get into all the specifics before I speak, so.
So again, I think you kind of said most of it, so the town has a partnership where they reach out to this community that will spray our community if we so choose, so last night that did-
Could I just back up a little bit, just to make sure people know what we're talking about? In case people haven't heard, there were mosquitoes found with the triple E virus in Burlington, and so there's been a question and response about what do we do? And so the town has responded and uses this program that Mr. Kuhn is now about to explain to you.
Right, so I just wanted to make sure that I was saying it right, but the name of the program is called the Eastern Middlesex Mosquito Control Project, so we have used them in the past, residents and neighborhoods are able to opt out of the project if they want to, so that's why we said that some of our neighborhoods may not have been, but the town did spray last night, that means a truck drives around, notice goes out, we're expected to not be outside on the streets or on our playing fields, and the intent is obviously to minimize the risk of flying insects that would carry any type of communicable or, you know, dangerous diseases. So that did happen last night, and there's another request that has come in that we could address to this board, if we could spray our fields. And what our fields means is that not the actual playing surfaces, but the tree line area around our fields. So for example, varsity field does not have a large tree line area here at the high school, there's some behind the end zone, it would be that area, then when you get to some of our other schools, again, not the playing surfaces, but around those areas. So that is something that we are looking to do, that is something that Pop Warner and Youth Sports is sponsoring, and that they have brought to our attention, so we are going to work with them and the rec department to get that accomplished, hopefully this week. And then, hopefully, we can all remain safe in this community, make sure that, you know, either we're following the procedures to, from dusk to dawn, make sure that we're wearing layers of clothing, if we're interested and consider using some type of bug repellent, like a DEET product would be the recommendation, and then after hours, staying away from wooded and watery areas. Stay safe out there, like I said.
And just Madam Chair, if there's any rescheduling of evening events, that's, parents should contact their school. So again, most of the events are going to be at the high school, and I know Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Hart are rescheduling athletic events from Friday night, for instance, to Saturday afternoon, and so all the scheduling will take place at the school where that's occurring, and they'll do all the communicating, so I think they're well aware of what's going on, I think they're making sure the practices are ending when the times are being recommended, I think it's 6:30 or so, and as it gets darker earlier, they'll probably change that, and if there's another recommendation, we'll follow that, we'll follow that recommendation, and we're just all waiting for that first frost, but it may be several weeks. We don't have any home games scheduled, I think, for the first two weeks, but even if our kids are playing away in an area where there's also been some testing found, again, more than likely, that district has moved the game to a daylight, a daytime, to be a daytime activity. So again, we're aware of it, we're all in communication, every district's trying to cooperate, there are many parts of the state that are of much higher risk than we are here, so we're all trying to help out, sort of every district possible that we can, and again, as Bob said, we're just trying to practice every precaution that's recommended and possible.
Good, thank you. Ms. Russo, did you have any?
That was my question, it's been swirling between the children that games are being moved, practices are being canceled, come six, so I was just wondering how people can go about finding the true times of games and movements, and where it might be, versus Snapchat.
Yeah, no, again, I think that's, I would say that, again, Snapchat might be accurate, I don't really know, but I think all that communication is going to come from the high school and through the athletic department office, and I think, just because the fields are rarely sort of just openly available, so usually moving a game requires a cascade of moving a bunch of other things, so Sean is taking care of all that with Mark, and they'll communicate to parents, and again, through the athletic office is how they'll do that.
So with regard to Pop Warner or any youth sports, we have not banned anyone from our fields after 6 o'clock, that's still the youth sport decision of what time they'll practice?
Again, I don't know the answer to that question, I'm assuming that we would make the recommendation, I'm not sure we would, I'm assuming they would follow the recommendation of, sort of the health recommendations that are out there, I'm not sure we would necessarily ban them, but I think Sean has talked to them all, I don't know exactly what's happening, so.
So the Port of Health has been in touch with the rec department as well, and those recommendations don't just stop at the school, so it does go over to the rec department as well, which then communicates, so we don't directly communicate with Burlington youth groups as far as renting the fields, the rec department does.
Okay.
So that message has been or is being relayed, so that 7 o'clock timeline, we try to push that up a little bit, because, you know, the mosquitoes don't know what 7 o'clock is, so we want to get a chump on that.
Okay, all right, so there is some-
It really is just a communications game right now, to make sure that we're all on the same page, and we're all talking to each other.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
I'm good.
So I want to thank you all for staying on top of that, and I also want to make sure people know that the school district is aware of this issue and is addressing it, and if you need more information about sports, then they should go to the athletic department part of the website, is that?
Yeah, or call the athletic office, or call the high school, I think, so certainly I can do that.
Good. So are there any other agenda items?
No, ma'am.
I don't see anyone else here for public participation, and so therefore, I'd like to, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
This is, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the school committee is now adjourned.